Once again, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for May 16, 2023. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk again to please call the roll.
Justice Dany?
Here.
Ganzey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swawansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have on the committee meetings this evening is Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Gunstein.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have three items today. Our first one is a discussion regarding the I-390 extension and various projects that are being worked on in regards to Lake Street and 390. Hannover Park and the Illinois Tollway have been working on Phase 1 engineering for the extension of the I-390 formerly known as the Elgin-O'Hare to County Farm Road. IDOT and Elgin are working on Phase 1 engineering for the intersection of Route 20 and Shales Parkway grade separation. We will present the concept plans that are currently being looked at for these projects and the concept plans for IDOT shared with the village several years ago to continue I-390 and Lake Street. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Dinjus for an update.
Thank you. I was talking to Paula about 390 extension. We have a couple of projects going on in relation to that. And we started looking and many of the board members were not here back in 2016 when IDOT came and made a presentation of I-390 extension to Elgin. So we thought it would be good to kind of do a quick overview of that and then, at the same time, talk about the two projects kind of on either side of us, one in Hanover and one in Elgin that are really active right now. So, as you know, it's called the Elgin-O'Hare.
Which currently does not go to either of those towns.
Does not get there, but IDOT does have a plan to get there at some point. And they, you can see, this is where 390 ends at 20 right now. And it's all about getting this corridor to get to Elgin at some point. I'll go through these. This is kind of the half that IDOT is looking at. They actually own, I believe, most if not all of the right-of-way to be able to do this. But if you look at here at 390 and 20, this would be extending down to County Farm. Can you see my marker on there? It might not show up the greatest. And then it ultimately comes out near North Avenue and 20. So if you can envision, that's kind of the connection. And then with that, there's a, and I can show you, they have a kind of a picture of the, so these are the improvements that they would be doing all through Bartlett. It's, if you've been east on Lake Street where you got the wide median and the four or six lanes, that's what you're looking at in the future going through Bartlett to Elgin. They have a section here. So you've seen this east similar to either on Lake Street or if you've been on North Avenue, same type of roadway is what you're looking at. Four to six lanes depending on what the anticipated traffic is. Some of the improvements that they're looking at in Bartlett, this is Oak and Lake, and then this is Bartlett and Lake. Looking at realigning Oak to hook up with Bartlett. You can see it makes that a four-way intersection. Existing Oak and Lake would become like a right-in, right-out, but you'd have a four-way traffic signal, much better traffic flow at that location. Opens it up for development on the south side. Right now, it's all farm fields, basically, right now. Then here's what, and none of this is finalized. There's just concepts at this point. They would get into, and I will say that I've checked in with IDOT, this stretch is nowhere on the horizon right now. It's not being worked on anywhere. It's still just a concept with a goal of years out. But here you can see North, Lake, kind of all blends in. So that whole intersection would get realigned and you'd have, right now, if you're familiar with North and Lake, it kind of is on a weird angle. It would become more of a traditional 90-degree intersection.
While you have that pulled up.
Yep.
To interrupt you or anything. I remember the 2016 meeting very well. And I remember TL not being happy about some of the things. And I particularly remember this, that intersection dumping off into North Avenue like that. I don't think that's a good idea. And I'm glad it's not on the horizon anytime soon, but I don't want it to be on the horizon. So I don't think that would be very good for our residents. So I just want to make that comment.
How do any of these concept plans impact like our TIF conversation?
When we get into the TIF, we definitely would want to at least be looking at this. Because like the big impact would be like if Oak did get realigned, you'd want to make sure you have a plan for that, that type of stuff.
When you say years in advance, you mean decades?
Yes. Most likely, anyway. Well, it was 2016 when they came and now you're getting close. I mean, it's been a while. So here's, I mean, you can, this is more of a total, you know, 390 extended to County Farm. Here's how it kind of winds through and gets out to Lake Street. It's kind of an overall concept plan. And if IDOT moves forward with this, they'll be coming back presenting to the board. They'll have to go through a whole public process. So all those concerns would get put, given to IDOT at that time and then they can adjust from there. So that's kind of the overall. Now, the other projects that are into work, so I say, you know, it's long-term, but they are working on pieces of it. So chances are, it is going to happen at some point. So I'll jump over to Hanover Park. Hanover Park has been working closely with the Tollway on kind of a phased approach where 390 would extend to County Farm and exit on the County Farm. You know, they have concerns about Greenbrook, the traffic running through that neighborhood and the school and all that. So they're pushing to get 390 extended to County Farm, which frees up Greenbrook. You know, we've been in those meetings. We've voiced our concerns of County Farm and Stearns and how that impacts the Village of Bartlett. It sounds like DuPage County is at these meetings as well. And DuPage County is coordinating with the Tollway that when this project were to move forward, they would be looking at doing an intersection improvement at County Farm and Stearns and Greenbrook to put dual lefts going, at least, I think they'd be looking at all four legs, but at least going, you know, our concern is the backup for eastbound in the morning, everybody wanting to turn left. It's going to back up past Newport. So dual lefts, that type of thing.
Way past Indian.
It'll, so that's our, that's our concern is, you know, Hanover Park has a school on Greenbrook. Well, we have a school on Stearns. So is, they've told us that they don't believe traffic will increase on Stearns with this change. The big change will be instead of heading east on Greenbrook, they're all going to be heading north on County Farm to get to 390. And then reverse commute. I know, you know, the evening rush is going to be south on County Farm to Stearns. But if that backs up, do we start having cut-through traffic on all the roads to the north there? That's some of the concerns we have shared with the Tollway. I think they have some other pictures here. So here you can see, this is 20 and they would be making changes there. This would be 390. You can see it's basically ending. You got a ramp going on to 390, going northbound to eastbound. And then you would have a traffic signal at this intersection for traffic flow in and out.
Is that a crisscross approach there?
They're still deciding what they want to do on 20 and 390 and how they would do it. They have a bunch of different ideas. So I don't know what the latest concept is that they're doing there, but they do have a lot of different concepts.
They have that at 59 and 88.
Yep. So this is just another picture, more at County Farm and 390. You can see the lanes that they'll have a left turn lane, a ramp going on. This is where we're concerned. Here, if traffic starts, so we want to make sure that they extend the right turn lane going southbound to westbound Stearns. Make sure it's long to be able to accommodate the traffic and avoid the cut-through through our roads. And then, let me just, the other end of town over on Elgin is the Route 20 and Shales intersection. If you're familiar with that, it's a grade separation. And then just to the east of it, you got the bridge over the tracks. They've had a lot of accidents there. What they're looking at doing is a grade separation. The limits pretty much go to Horizon, all the way to west on 20. So we've been attending their meetings and trying to look at what improvements we can get at Naperville and Lake because obviously that has been a discussion we've had. This is the timing on it. They're hoping to have the Phase 1, which is the different concept plans, completed this year. It'll go through a public hearing process and that. So you're looking at 2024 when this, when that Phase 1 would be complete. Then you're looking at two to three years of design work and then another two to three years of construction. So you're looking at seven years before this would be completed.
Just for that Shales Parkway?
For just the Shales Parkway. I don't have a schedule on the Hanover Park 390, County Farm. There's still funding that they're trying to get for that. It's probably on a similar timeframe. Because they, they're at Phase 1. They still have to, would have to do the Phase 2 design and then construction. So what you'd be looking at is 20 would go over Shales. It'd pretty much be at the same elevation as the bridge. So you're going to, 20 would just be at that same elevation extending west. And then you would go under the road with Shales, Villa, you know, Elgin's been pushing, you know, Villa would get connected up to Gifford. They're looking at roundabouts, Bluff City Boulevard, you know, all that stuff would be kind of down at the one level, but 20 would be up in the air separating that traffic. Here's the overall area that we're concerned with that would go through Bartlett. They don't have any changes in curb cuts east of Naperville. You can see these are where the dealerships are going in. That's still full access. They will have a raised median going just to the west of the car wash. And then they're actually putting a raised median west of Naperville all through that curve where you have the dip. And we've had some head-on accidents and stuff like that. So they are doing a raised median there. It should make that section safer. As far as at Naperville and 20, they are looking at, one thing that we did find out is the traffic timing will be much better. They do not have, they said that doesn't meet warrants to do a dual left going northbound to westbound on Naperville or, you know, westbound to Lake Street. So the left turn lane for Naperville going on to Lake Street, dual left is not warranted. They do propose to have a left turn, a dual left going westbound to southbound Naperville. But the traffic timing for Naperville, there will be more time on Naperville allowing that traffic to clear better than what we've got now. So those are some of the improvements that how will be affected, I guess, in Bartlett. I think with that, are there any questions? Concerns?
What was the timeline for the stretch between Park Boulevard and Naperville Road, roughly, those intersections?
Oh, that's the one that is currently not even being designed.
Okay. So the stretch, the stretch between Bartlett, or that's in Bartlett, is not currently being designed?
Stretch from, correct, and actually the only, it's actually from County Farm all the way to 59, let's say. That is not on the horizon. It's not on IDOT's horizon right now. It's not in their budgets anywhere. It's on the list of long-term goals, I would say, but it's not funded to move forward at this point. If we, obviously, if we ever get wind that it is, we'll be coming to the board, make sure you guys are aware of that.
But they don't even have concept plans for that.
The, what I showed you is.
That's it, stops there.
Feasibility is all it is right now.
Dan, has there been any discussion of what they're planning on doing on Lake Street, how that may affect the businesses that are along that area, in that area?
So if you're, if you're looking at a cross-section where you've got a raised median.
Yeah. How would you turn into Moretti's?
Well, that, that's right here. So Moretti's right now, it will still have the full access at the western driveway.
Yeah.
And then they do have a right-in, right-out on the eastern one because it's a raised median across, in front of that section, is a raised median. So that one will be a right-in. I think it already is signed. One of them, I think, has signed no lefts already. But, so they still will have full access on one of their drives.
Will it affect the dealerships that are there now?
They'll have full access. One thing they will be doing right now out there, you've got, you have that like mountable median, which is kind of awkward. That's all going away. It'll be just a striped median, which I think will be safer for everybody. The plows will actually be able to clear it in the winter better and that type of stuff. So I think that will be a net benefit.
Because, you know, the dealership is going to be parking cars down there at Lake at 59 and they'll have to physically drive those cars to the.
They'll still have at Horizon, here's Horizon, that, that's not, they're ending basically at Horizon. That improvement ends at Horizon. So they're not changing that at all.
I think the biggest concern I had with the dump on County Farm is that whole corner. Because we're looking at developing that corner there.
Or County Farm.
Now you're going to create a situation where coming out of the Shell station, you'll never be able to go out and go left. You'd have to come out and go around through the intersection. And then trying to get development into that big empty lot that we've been trying to develop for years, that's going to totally change the whole environment over there.
Yeah, that actually is looking like it's going to be moving forward, that development that you're talking about. And that actually will help because the Shell is part of that development. If it moves forward, the access on the County Farm at the gas station goes away and moves north.
Okay.
To this new development, which will actually make it better.
Yeah, that would be better.
Get it away from Stearns Road. It'll make it a little better.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Any further questions for Dan? Thank you, Dan. Great job. Great presentation. Very informative. All right, Mr. President, we have a second item on our agenda, and it is the Orchards Gaming Special Use Permit. The petitioner is requesting a special use permit to serve beer and wine at a gaming facility, café, at 978 South Bartlett Road in Bartlett Orchard Plaza Shopping Center. This is for discussion only. I will turn it over to Kristy Stone if anybody has any questions.
Not yet.
This is a pretty straightforward special use. We're hoping to do the public hearing on June 1st if the board forwards this on.
Okay. If nobody has any questions, we can send this on to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further review. Third item on our agenda is petitioner is requesting a special use permit to sell beer, wine, liquor, and packaged liquors, in a packaged liquor store located at 1072 Army Trail Road in the Galleria of Bartlett Shopping Center. The proposed, the property is zone B3 Neighborhood Shopping Zoning District. Any questions on this one? If not, we'll send this on to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further review. And that is all we have today.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. Next, we have Community and Economic Development Committee Chairman Ganzey.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items. The first, regarding Hawk Hollow Middle School, the petitioner is requesting a plat of consolidation to create a single lot for the conversion of Hawk Hollow Elementary School into a middle school. The petitioner is also requesting to rezone the new 19.9 acre parcel to the P1 Public Land Zoning District upon consolidation. The village's future land use plan designates the property as suburban residential and municipal institutional. The petitioner is also requesting an amendment to future land use plan to remove the Fair Oaks Road extension and designate the entire property as municipal institutional. The petitioner is also requesting a site plan for the proposed facility expansion, which includes a two-story addition as well as two parking lots, providing a total 236 parking spaces. U-46 anticipates a total of 27 classrooms and a maximum enrollment of 750 students upon completion of the expansion. The majority of the expansion is devoted to flex lab space, library expansion, and a new gymnasium. Is there anything else to add?
This is the school that's going to become a middle school. It's currently an elementary school.
Correct. There was also previously a single-family subdivision that was approved and platted around this. With the U-46's plans changing, they had to come forward and make some changes.
So can you point out the Fair Oaks Road extension here on the?
If you look on this map, the village has acquired right-of-way previously through the enclave subdivision, and it was also proposed to cut through.
Can't see your dot, Kristy.
You guys need like neon green pointers or something.
See if I could.
Make it bigger and heavier and red or green or.
Let's see what color.
It's purple.
Got to get out of the pistols.
Yeah, let's go yellow. I guess it's purple. Try one more. So Fair Oaks Road was originally planned through the site. At this point in time, the village doesn't think the enclave residents would be very supportive of directing traffic through the middle of their subdivision. It would also bisect part of the school's property as well. Because of the change to the property, the village is thinking that the extension of Fair Oaks Road is not necessary.
So it wouldn't go north of Army Trail?
Correct. It would stop where it is now.
The previous little squares you've got there, that was originally zoned for houses?
Correct. It was known as the Jaccaranda subdivision.
Yeah.
A lawsuit at one point. It was a settlement agreement. It's, the plat was just recorded, I believe, in 2018. The plat was recorded at the time U-46 was planning on selling the lots off. Due to the change in market conditions, that wasn't feasible. And now that they're changing their plans to creating true middle schools, they realized this was a great site.
How many more students will be, I know this has 750 now. What's, how many students are in this school now?
The petitioners are present. If you could answer what the current enrollment is.
So my overall question is going to be, is what's going to be done to ensure it's like smooth for students being dropped off?
Yeah, because it's kind of a wreck over there right now. I don't know if you've ever been over there in the morning. And if you add students, you're going to add cars, a lot of them, especially a middle school. Middle schoolers don't like taking the bus.
Claudia Welp in 2200 Cabot Drive in Lyle. I'm the civil engineer on the project. It's 293 students currently and it's going to go up to 750.
750. And we've figured that what these improvements show, you're going to have 10 times better traffic flow because there's only one way in and one way out now.
Correct. So we're adding another drive on the north there. That's what that road that's going to connect to Gerber Road. And then that will be for students drop off, things like that. And then the existing Jaccaranda Drive entrance, that'll be for buses only. And then after hours, so after 4:00 PM, that'll open up for, you know, events and things like that. But during school hours, that'll be for buses only on the south side.
With a middle school versus an elementary school, is there more staff?
Yes. So that was taken into consideration as well as, I believe that it was two and a half times the amount of potential traffic just for the school itself. And then the traffic consultant also looked at future traffic conditions for the whole area. And I believe they looked at 2050 as the future projecting for traffic.
How about a Gerber and Schick? Will that still be a stop sign or are there any thoughts of having a stoplight there?
That has not been looked at or considered, no. I don't believe there's, there's no additional backup onto Gerber Road that would be affected.
Does staff agree with the traffic engineer's report?
Yes. The village's traffic consultant agreed with the traffic study as well as the improvements. They will be adding a new turn lane onto Gerber Road. That's shown on the plans. And just for.
Where's that at, Kristy?
So it's in between the two curb cuts. They'll be adding a new left-hand turn lane that'll be for buses only.
Half of your.
Half of, no, I'm.
Yeah. So there's, there's an existing turn lane now that turns onto Jaccaranda Drive. That is actually going to get a little bit shorter, but it's for buses only. And then the turn lane into the new drive will extend all the way up. I can't remember what street that is. That will be for traffic turning into the new drive off of Gerber Road. And then there is stacking throughout. You can see how the purple kind of weaves through there. That's how the stacking will happen inside, within the parking lot for drop-off. And then the buses will follow the yellow lines there.
So the stacking that is shown on the plan can accommodate 84 cars in line, which should be more than sufficient. And then the buses, they can stack a total of 21 buses in that loop.
Another little circle thing?
Yes.
I can tell you that 84 is probably not sufficient with 700 kids. Because have you ever been over to Eastview in the morning? We got complaints at our last board meeting that Eastview was having such a huge issue. Somebody's going to get hit. And we have it at Sicamar. So.
They don't have the amount of stacking that this provides. This 84 spaces is significantly more than what we have at our.
Yeah. At Eastview, they stack up on Oak Avenue. I'm just real concerned that Gerber's going to become a, yeah. It's already, I don't know how many of you have tried to get out of Gerber onto Sterns or Schick. Schick. It's not easy. Somebody's going to get hit there pretty soon because it is really hard making a left turn from Stearns or from Gerber onto Schick. You can't see people coming over the hill. You can't see anything. We need some site improvements at that intersection for sure. If we're going to increase the traffic this much, there needs to be some really, real consideration about improving the intersection at Gerber and Schick Road.
Should be a light.
Something's got to happen there.
They should have a light there.
If you go back to the original mapping after the, it would be page 14 of this piece, I believe. We're right there. So Vincent Drive, is this going to come out onto, will that access into Jaccaranda from Penny?
There's, no, they are not going to be making the connection. There's... No, they are not going to be making the connection into... That was Benson Drive. They're not making that connection due to their site layout. There will only be the two access points on Gerber Road. They're vacating that right-of-way that was dedicated as part of the subdivision. There is also not a connection to Winston Lane to the north. That's all being vacated. The only access will be to Gerber Road. We didn't want them having... We had concerns about people backing up into the subdivisions using that as a cut-through.
Is there a... Go ahead. When transportation happens, are the majority of the buses going to come up Schick or Army Trail?
I don't think the... I don't know if you want to speak to this, but I don't think the layout of where all the kids are going to be coming from has been finalized yet.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Pat Wald, Director of Plan Operations, U-46, 41 Briarwood Drive, Gilberts, Illinois. Yeah, we don't have the boundaries defined yet to determine where those buses are going to be coming from. We're anticipating only 16 buses based on the size of the building that we're going to have. So the stacking that we have with the additional spaces for the buses is going to be beneficial.
I'm not concerned at all with the stacking on the buses. I'm concerned with Gerber Road and the flow of traffic down, up and down Gerber Road, even at Army Trail and at Schick, and getting in and out of your entrance on Gerber Road. I think we had a complaint not long ago coming in and out of that entryway that some brush needed to be cut back. So some trees actually need to be cut back because you're going to increase the traffic tremendously. I don't know if you've seen parents drop kids off at school before, but my wife was one of them and it's like, fast as you can go. Get in, get out, get in, get out. It's crazy. I just think that this, looking forward, I see Eastview. I see Centennial made huge improvements with the chief's help. But this is just a problem road trying to turn right or left in the mornings on getting on Schick and Army Trail. An Army Trail light takes forever. The light there, you're going to wait three minutes, which is going to back that traffic clear up from people that are dropping people off. Now, I can guarantee you in the morning, if you do it this way, that Army Trail light, if you leave the timing on that light at Army Trail, you're going to have cars backed up past the entrance to the school.
And then do we compete with high school traffic in the morning?
On Schick, yeah. I don't know. I just have my concerns about the flow of traffic in that particular area adding this many students.
Can we have the traffic engineer review it again and maybe send us out a memo? And I know it still has to go to the...
And maybe answer the question that somebody had there about the number of additional students that we are anticipating. Yeah, the numbers of going from 200 and some...
Well, it's going to be... It's 457 new students.
Yeah, and I've got complaints with 263 there. We've got complaints about people getting in and out of Jackaronda onto Gerber with just that many students there.
It's very dark back there at night. It's very...
When is it scheduled to go to the Planning and Zoning?
It was scheduled for June 1st, but we want us to have our traffic consultant look it over again and push it back to July.
We can shoot it to Planning and Zoning, and then we'll get another bite out of it, right?
Yeah, I think we still should definitely send it to Planning and Zoning and...
I would just suggest on record for Planning and Zoning and View Oaks, just the last thing I want to see happen is have people trying to get onto Army Trail this way and dropping kids off, and then people going this way on Gerber, and then them trying to get around the corner and take a right to go to work. It is not easy. I would really suggest people try to do that in the morning at 8 o'clock.
There are some homes there too.
Yeah.
And you anticipate two and a half times increase in traffic? Is that what I heard?
For bus traffic.
For bus traffic?
That's for just the onsite, as assumed, two and a half times.
Onsite for... I'm sorry.
Yes, two and a half times what the traffic consultant assumed for onsite circulation traffic compared to what it is today is what they...
Not buses.
That'd just be for parking.
Parking, yeah.
Parking essentially. Yeah, but then those, obviously those...
Those cars have to...
Teachers are leaving at 4:30 or 5:00.
Is this school currently a walking school in conjunction with buses? Do kids walk to this school?
Some do, yeah.
Are we going to see...
From the northern neighborhood.
Hawk Hollow.
Neighborhood in the north. Are they able to get through from the neighborhood that's just directly to the east? Is there a walk path through there?
There's walking paths from the east. There's walking paths from the west, and then the south as well. So there's one on the west that'll come up, and it'll continue down the east, the northeast. It also continues the southeast and the southwest. There's walking paths from all directions.
But not from the north?
No, there's two from the north, one from the northwest and one from the northeast.
Yep, this would be a 9 o'clock start?
Do we know what time the school starts there?
I don't know what time the school would start when it becomes a middle school, but I can get that for you.
Eastview, 9?
Yeah. Or 9.
It wouldn't conflict with the high school. So where are they planning to move the elementary students to?
So the elementary students are going to be going to Spring Trails in Prairie View.
Prairie View, yeah, a lot of them.
I'm done.
The reason it's changing is it's going to 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. So a middle school is going to have more kids now because it is capturing an additional year of school for kids. So the reason I asked is if there was walkers, because with the increase of kids, we're going to see an increase in walking traffic there, being that there's three grade levels there.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that the crosspaths and all the walkways, they're not crossing in front of buses and cars that are speeding through the parking lot to leave, or angry parents frustrated that are going to be peeling out of there.
We made sure to make our sidewalks at least eight feet wide, and all of our paths are very specific to try to avoid all of that.
Okay, let's see what PZ has to say.
So we'll forward to Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, ladies. Good information.
Can we move this along to Planning and Zoning?
That's what we're done.
All right, so we'll forward that to Planning and Zoning. Our second item is Lake Street TIF consultant. In the village's most recent strategic plan under short-term complex was to determine the need for a TIF district in a portion of the downtown and along Lake Street. Within the village board's most recent goal visioning exercise, it was determined that the Lake Street corridor would be the preferred location at this time. After careful consideration of interviews and evaluation of experience, staff is recommending that an agreement between Tusca Associates, Inc. and the Village of Bartlett be forwarded to the board. We'll turn this over to staff.
You covered it. We interviewed two consultants, both of which were very qualified, but we preferred one over the other. And his letter and scope of services are before you this evening.
Super.
I'm excited about this. I think this would start a well-needed TIF district along Lake Street, and much-needed improvements could come from this.
Did this consultant or the one before take a look between downtown and Route 20 and give any recommendations?
We did, but the information coming from the board after the strategic planning workshop that we did had us focus on Lake Street. We did ask that question though of Lee Brown, and he agreed that Lake Street would be the place to start. Lee has done... Lee and Tusca have worked on all of our TIF districts. They're very well-versed in the community. We had a very strong interview with them, and we're delighted to bring them back into town and start working on it.
You've had a relationship with Tusca and Associates for years. Back... Did they start with us in the 80s?
My... Yeah, they did our first land use plan.
18 or 19?
I'm going to say 19. My first staff meeting that I attended, Lee Brown was talking to staff about the downtown streetscape program. And that was in the early 1990s.
Thank you. Thank you, Paula.
All right, groovy.
All right, so they'll be forwarded to the board.
Thank you, Chairman Gansey. Next item, Public Works and Golf Committee Chairman Danny.
Okay. Well, we're winding down here a little bit, and before I get into the downtown sidewalk discussion, which I'm really excited to see because I understand we have samples today, I just want to reiterate, I said two weeks ago, I always announce birthdays. It is the mayor's birthday tomorrow.
Shush.
And the following week is trustee Laporte's birthday, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Gemini.
Yeah, my son is a mate too, so you're right. Anyway, downtown sidewalk discussion. The executive summary states that the downtown sidewalks were discussed at a committee meeting in January. At the committee meeting, it was determined that we would like to keep the current pattern, but install stamped and red-stained concrete in place of pavers. Moore Brewing is getting ready to replace the sidewalk in front of their location, so we met with their contractor Eagle Concrete over the plans, and the stamped and red-stained concrete. Eagle Concrete recommends against installing the stamped red concrete. They said that their experience with the stamp and stain hasn't been good since the sealers changed a few years ago. The new sealer traps moisture and causes the surface, concrete surface to crumble quicker than expected. They also said that the red concrete tends to fade to pink. They're recommending eliminating the stamped concrete and going with a charcoal-colored concrete for the interior portion. And we'd like to discuss this this evening and finalize the, make a finalization for Brew and Moring. And with that, I really hope you're... Dan, I hope you brought a sample. I've been waiting tirelessly all evening for the presentation on the concrete.
How many meetings have we had about this?
Next meeting, they'll be blue.
Here we go. Oh.
So did we actually have an engineer tell us that the red dye that we would put in there would be fine? And then the actual contractor says, oh, no, you better not do that?
No, we did not bring this to an engineer. We, I mean, we just started looking at the different colors at the concrete plants that they have available, trying to match or get some similar to the brick. Remember the whole discussions with the brick versus concrete? I had concerns with the red. I have heard that. We ended up calling a couple other contractors, concrete contractors, to get kind of their opinion. They agree with what Eagle Concrete is saying as far as a red concrete does tend... It all fades, right? It will tend to fade to a pinker or salmon color. So that's a concern. The thing that concerned me was on the sealer, and I hadn't heard that before, so we did some asking of other contractors too. And the sealer, I guess, that they have now does, is creating, or they're seeing issues with it as far as the longevity because it's basically trapping, you know, we live in a freeze-thaw climate, and it's trapping that moisture in to the concrete rather than releasing it, which is, they're seeing premature failure at the surface. So they'll do whatever, but they just wanted, you know, do you really want to do this? Because we're seeing that you may be coming back a lot sooner than what you normally would. They definitely recommend if you do a brick pattern that you really do need to do the sealer because it makes it really, it shows it better. He said doing without a sealer, it's not going to look good. He highly recommended against that. So I think our choice is red with the sealer. Or he had suggested a charcoal color because that will fade. It's just going to get a lighter gray. We kind of did the two colors because plain concrete is on the outside. It kind of gives you the difference between the two. You wouldn't have to do the sealer. It's concrete. One's colored regular concrete. One's colored a darker concrete. It gives the contrast that I think we're looking for. It doesn't have the brick pair. So I wanted to bring it to you to see, stick with the original plan, or do we want to take a look at this and try that?
Where's the brick pattern on the gray one?
So there is no brick. The...
So you're proposing to eliminate the brick pattern?
Have no brick because in order to do the brick, then you would have to do the sealer, and that's where they're saying...
The color will...
I think that takes away from the downtown charm when you get rid of the brick. We've talked about this before. If you're planning to do that, at that point, you might as well just fill it in with matching concrete because it's that gray, the dark gray is going to fade very similar to concrete color, and...
They're seeing that it doesn't quite get to the plain concrete, but I don't...
Why couldn't we stamp the gray? If you're proposing to use gray and the board thinks gray is good, why couldn't you stamp it?
Yeah, I agree. I don't understand why we...
We can't. So if you... We can't. So if you want to, it gets down to whether you want to have the sealer and the issues that could result from that versus not. So we can't, if you don't want the fading red to the salmon color, we could tell them to do the gray, put the brick pattern in, but then we would have to seal it. So then it gets down to, do we have, does it come apart sooner?
It's the sealant that makes it deteriorate. Is that correct?
That's what they're telling us, and that's, we talked to other contractors, seeing the same thing.
I would agree.
Exactly. The science behind the sealer that changed, but it was an environmental thing that...
They changed it. It's more water-based now. So there's four patios on my street. They're all stamped concrete, and we've had nothing but issues with the sealer since they changed the formula. And it's high maintenance, and you have to do it almost every two, technically probably every year. So I think from a maintenance point of view, unless they go back to the old sealer, I would say I'm not for it. And that's four houses on my street, all stamped concrete, all seal it, and we all complain about it every time we have to do it because it's not, originally when we first had it done, you could go three or four years and not have to touch it. And now it's almost annually, and the sealer does fade. It does crack. I don't have a swimming pool. The neighbors have a swimming pool. The chips end up in the swimming pool. I mean, it's, and it's slippery.
Help me out here. I have a question for you. Why, if it's stamped, I thought that was just a dye that they used, you know, a fixture, a dye, and after the concrete was wet, they would just compress this, and that would give it the effect of the stamped concrete.
That is what it is. So in order to get the brick pattern, it's just a press that...
Which is what the red is, which is okay.
Exactly. That is.
So why does that have to be sealed? It's all concrete, doesn't it?
The sealant brings out the color.
Gives it the look. You can tell the different, the color, the red color towards, closest to you guys, is non-sealed. The color this side is sealed, and it just makes it pop better.
But the gray...
Why do we have to seal it?
The gray is...
But if we didn't seal it, then, but if you all like the stamped look, and we didn't seal it, because the sealer's the problem, right?
Sealant's the problem, but they're also recommending if you're going to do a pattern, brick, stone, whatever, that you seal it because that's what gives it the character. That's what gives it the look. Kind of plain if you don't...
I know. It makes it pop. It does. Makes it pop.
This concrete here for this brick pattern is a stain that goes on it.
Oh, that is concrete that is already dyed all the...
So that's dyed, right?
Colored all the way through. It's a low, we would be getting a load of concrete that's colored all the way through. So if it flexes off, you'll still have the color going through.
So why, again, why can't we stamp the dark gray and not seal it? It's already a different color.
Yeah.
Not that I even agree with the gray. I'm just saying...
Didn't Joe just say sealing is really not a good idea?
Yes.
Well, the gray is not sealed right now, correct?
The gray is not sealed right now.
So if you stamped it, then it would look the same color, correct?
Be the same color. You'll just have the pattern. We can do that. I mean, we're doing the more piece. We're trying to get more ready to get opened. We can do whatever you guys want. It's a relatively small section, right?
Yeah.
So if it falls apart in a relatively short period, you're not replacing the whole downtown.
If I had to vote on it...
A test spot.
It could be our test spot if you would like. We could do the, I don't know what the preference is.
Yeah, if I had to make...
Gray with the pattern?
Based on what you're saying, if I had to make a choice this evening, a decision, if I were putting in my house, okay. What I'd do is I'd stamp the gray to give it the appearance of the brick and not seal it. That's what I would do.
Is that the preference?
That's my preference.
Well, I, again, I still don't understand why we can't do the red if it's stained concrete and not seal it.
You can. If you don't, you can, if you don't mind it being...
What is?
You don't want it to fade.
Well, it's my understanding, it's my understanding too, is the stamped concrete is not fully impregnated. It's, there's a powder that's thrown on there to give it the color, so just the surfaces. It's my...
We would still, we're still planning to do the full thickness of the concrete in that square will be the color.
But with the red?
With the red.
The red was fully...
What you're talking about, they, the sealer does have... What you're talking about, they, the sealer does have enhancers that make it pop out better.
Okay, so when they, the residential patios, it was regular concrete, then they threw the color of your choice on there on the surface, and then they stamped the surface.
And you can do it that way. Our, well, we were, we're trying to avoid that because once it pops, then it's just plain concrete. We're trying to get the color all the way through, so, concrete will pop, it's going to crack, and we felt, get it all the way through so that when it does it, you still have color underneath that top layer.
What's the life expectancy on this? Because that's what I really honestly care about. I don't really care about color, that's not my thing in life, but I want to know that this is going to last.
Right.
Because if it's not going to last, I don't want to do it, and I want to go back to the drawing board to find out what's going to last.
I mean, I'm just going off of what the contractor has been telling us. He said within a couple years, you're going to start to see issues. I will say the stuff that we have out front, I mean, that's sealed, we've been sealing it, it is popping at areas, but right now it's still, you know, for the most part, still looks decent. It is starting to pop.
So there's maintenance involved in this?
There's maintenance involved with sealing for.
Now, the bricks that are installed out there now, were they installed with a concrete base, then sand, and then brick? Isn't that the proper way to do it?
Correct.
So it wasn't done correctly before, how about if we go back to the drawing board and actually install brick and do it the right way? Because I don't want, I don't want to revisit this, and I don't want maintenance for, I know there's maintenance on everything, but if you do brick the right way, you're not going to have problems, and we're going to have a look that is superior to this. When you do brick the proper way, you don't have issues. So I don't care really about, you know, I care about cost in the overall sense, but this is our downtown area. This is what we're going to be looking at forever.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
I agree 100%.
So I, I think we need to go back and actually have an engineer draw it up, find out what the life expectancy is, and, and run with it. And obviously, I don't want you to waste, you know, tons of man-hours on this, but I think it's, I think it's a simple, you know, once we talk to an engineer and get going on it, I think that's the right approach.
I, I agree with trustee Hopkins with the fact that we want it to look really a lot nicer, and I think that gray would look nice, I'm not sure. I, I, that's why I don't get into these conversations because I'm like horrible at determining what looks good, bushes or whatever, but we should figure out something we can get in front of Moore so we don't stop them.
Well, that's, that's my concern with the, I don't disagree kind of doing a relook of what the ultimate plan is, but Moore Brewing is calling me every day saying, when are we pouring our concrete we want to open up? So do we just tell them to put plain concrete for the time being, or do we want to try one of these to see what it is with the minimum?
Brick the right way.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we go to Moore Brewing site? This is my opinion. Let's put it in the same way it's in our entire downtown, the correct way with a concrete bed, brick, and it allows us to see if that really is the way we want to go, and it's done, and it is a cheaper way, less expensive way for us to fix our current brick situation throughout our town. Because we can pull brick, put the concrete bed down, and then reset those, those blocks.
Well, let's not go that far.
I'm just saying, it's.
I feel like every nice community.
Pretty bad.
Every nice, like downtown area I walk in is brick.
It is.
I was like missing that over the last couple months.
Brick does have maintenance, and if you remember the discussion where we started getting into the whole, is you can still do brick. Right now, you can see like the intersection, inner portion is all brick. You could swap that out, and you could turn the inner portion to concrete and the outsides as brick ribbons, which you still have the accent, it still looks good, and it's, because brick does, I mean, I agree, concrete base with the sand is going to make it the best possible. We even talked to actually a landscape architect from Tusca to get their ideas, and they definitely agree that a concrete base with the sand is their best case for brick, but brick does have maintenance. So the thought would be if we're going to go, and that's where I think we do need more discussion and get the professionals that have been doing it a lot longer than I've been doing it, to be able to come and talk to you guys, the discussion of, do you do all that brick, or do you do brick ribbons, that type of thing? Because I think you still can accomplish the enhancement that you are all looking for, I think, with brick ribbons and having concrete as the main, because bricks settle, and you always have that issue with the transition between concrete and bricks and bricks moving and trip hazards and all that stuff, so.
Brick ribbons sound good.
I think whatever you think to get Moore Brewing going, I think you should do.
I mean, that charcoal gray with a red ribbon would look nice, probably.
It'd be great, yeah.
Gray definitely matches, I think, Moore Brewing. Pretty, pretty spot on.
I can't, I can't tell the difference between black and navy blue. I have to, I'm like, what color is this?
So if I'm hearing you right, we can, we'll take care of Moore. Do we want to do the bricks as trustee Gunstein said and just tell them to do the same pattern we got?
I don't see a reason to invent the wheel at this point if that is an inferior product.
I think you.
If the, if the red is an inferior product, there's no reason to go that route, right? I mean, because we wouldn't want to have to replace concrete later, so.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking that, going back out of the 18 conversations we've had on this, based off of what you're telling us, the brick is probably the best product if it is put in correctly.
Can we even get those same bricks or is it going to be a new one?
Dan, Dan, I want to ask.
We're going to do brick. My recommendation is to go to a clay paver, which is not what we currently have, it's a concrete.
Yeah, that's fine, I would like.
So then you got to pick the color on all, that's where I don't know that we can get that solved for Moore.
I think we need, we should still, we should keep beating this horse, is what I think.
Yes.
Dan, what is, what the, brick versus a stamped concrete, what's the difference of price?
Talk about that right now.
No, no, we don't care.
I want to know, I want to know, all right, relax.
What did, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question at all.
Relax, don't meet him.
Brick versus stamped concrete? I don't have that number with me.
It's more expensive.
Paver, the brick pavers is going to be more expensive, but how much more I don't.
Don't remember. All right, thank you.
I would like to address the salmon contact comment that keeps coming. There is a reason for this. 20 years ago, we had a painter come out to do the exterior of our house, and I gave him accidentally the wrong code, and when my husband came home and part of the house was painted, he said, why is the house pink? And I said, it's not pink, honey, it's salmon. That's where I got that.
That's funny.
So where are we, what direction is Dan going in just?
He's got it.
You got it?
I'll let Paula decide.